Thank you, and welcome everybody to the October fifteenth, 2024 council meeting. Everyone is here, Chase will be here, so we will count him as present when he walks in. Please help me muddle through this, because this is my first time doing this, so we will definitely make some errors. First on the agenda, we will do adoption of budgets, and we will start with the Kewona And these will be, when I get done reading them, and either approve or deny, there'll be a pass and sign on each one of them. The ordinance ten fifteen twenty twenty four dash B is for the Kewona Public Library, and their general fund is two hundred and four thousand, four hundred and forty-nine. The adopted tax levy is one hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine, for an adopted rate of point one five nine three. Their debt service is sixty-seven thousand, zero, five, zero. Adopted tax levy of eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven, for a tax rate of point one zero five one. For an adopted budget of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Adopted tax levy of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and sixteen, for adopted tax rate of point two six four four. Any questions, comments from anybody? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve as read.
I will make a motion to adopt the Kewona Public Library twenty twenty-five budget.
Phil made a motion, I need a second. Randy seconded. All in favor? Six, zero. Again, they seem to be this will...
Sign and pass.
Thank you. Next is the budget for the Fulton County Airport Authority. This is ordinance one zero one five two zero two four. Budget for twenty twenty-five Fulton County Airport Authority. For the airport authority, the adopted budget is six hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred dollars, for an adopted tax levy of five hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred. No, Chase got here, thank you. For an adopted tax rate of point zero four four two. Accumulative airport building of a hundred thousand, for an adopted tax levy of forty thousand, five hundred, for a tax rate of point zero zero three five. The adopted budget, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred dollars. Adopted tax levy, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, for an adopted tax rate of point zero four seven seven. Comments or questions? Anybody? If that's the case, I will entertain a motion to approve the Fulton County Airport Authority budget.
I will move to approve the airport authority budget for twenty twenty-five.
Phil made a motion to approve, do we have a second? Steve seconded. All in favor? Chase, did you vote?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. You're behind Lori, I couldn't see you. Passed seven, zero. Next on the agenda is ordinance one zero one five two zero two four dash A. This is the twenty twenty-five budget for the Fulton County Solid Waste Management District. Solid Waste, excuse me, Solid, Solid Waste Management, adopted budget eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred. It does not have a tax rate, but we still have to approve the budget. So, any questions or comments? That's the case, I will entertain a motion to approve the twenty-five budget for Solid Waste Management District.
So moved.
Chase moved to approve, do we have a second? Randy seconded. All in favor? Seven, zero. And last but not least, the big one. Ordinance one zero one five two zero two four dash C. This is the twenty twenty-five budget for the county of Fulton County. Start with the general fund. Ten million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Adopted tax levy, four million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two, for an adopted tax rate of point three two four one. Next is two thousand and fifteen reassessment. Two hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven is the adopted budget. The adopted tax levy is one hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and four, for a tax rate of point zero zero seven eight. Next is debt service. Six hundred and one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, for an adopted tax levy of four hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and seventy, for an adopted tax rate of point zero three one nine. Next is Coombridge. Three hundred and fifty-seven thousand is the adopted budget. The adopted tax levy is three hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars, for a tax rate of point zero two three. Next is Health Department. Four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-six is the adopted budget. The adopted levy is one hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five, for an adopted tax rate of point zero zero nine four. And Coomcap is three hundred and seventy-nine, excuse me, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred dollars. Adopted tax levy of four hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars, for a tax rate of point zero three one zero. Total adopted budget is sixteen million, nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-two. Adopted tax levy of six million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and nineteen, for an adopted tax rate of point four two seven two. Any questions, comments concerning the Fulton County budget? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the Fulton County budget for twenty twenty-five as written.
I'll move to approve.
Phil moved to approve the budget as written, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Lori seconded. All in favor? We get seven, zero. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, now, a little different, we did some changing here. We're going to have the Job Classification Committee report before we do the salary ordinances. Does someone on job classification want to speak to these?
I will begin with...
You got a vote on it?
I do. With the help of Pete and Lori, because they're, all three of us are on the Job Classification We met September the twenty-fourth, for two department heads requested that we meet. Dawn Zimi asked for a supplemental to be given to her in the, am I saying this right? Yes, I am. She was requesting a supplemental of two thousand and five hundred dollars be added to her salary as voter registration duties. And we recommended that since the supplemental of two thousand dollars is already in place on the twenty twenty-five salary ordinance referred to as registration of voters, that the clerk could pay that amount of money, the supplemental, to whoever she wants to, and she chose to pay one of her staff, so we declined her request. So, this is before the entire council. I will tell you, is Dawn out here? She's not here. So, she, let me find it. Dawn did send an email to the State Board of Accounts saying that she requested the Job Classification Committee consider her request that she receive an additional stipend of twenty-five hundred dollars as a result of a new Indiana code that was passed July first, that all clerks could receive this additional stipend. So she wanted the board members to know that, and she's asking that we reconsider our suggestion that her request is denied. So I guess I'll ask for discussion. Lori, do you have anything else to add?
We didn't see that it was planned for ahead of time. We could see where she could not plan for it, it was just passed, but she should have probably had inkling earlier in the year maybe that it was coming along. But to ask for that at the last minute in the budget, we felt like it was something that we did not feel was there, more, one just that it was already being paid, the other bit. The timeliness is just wrong for this year, we felt like, and we realized it's an election year when it would be paid, but seeing as it wasn't planned for ahead of time, she didn't know she was getting it ahead of time, so we stuck with our original plan that we were denying the request.
Did she say anything about it, like why she waited, or maybe she just didn't know?
All we know is the law passed July of this year, and it says may pay it, not shall pay it, so it's not, we have to pay it.
I will maybe add, when Dawn contacted the State Board of Accounts for further explanation, I will add this, so you guys can make a decision based on everything that we know. This new stipend of twenty-five hundred dollars that was passed into law again July first is specifically for the clerk's office. The clerk, in the clerk's office, not for anyone else in her office, so I just wanted to tell you that.
If there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion that we accept the Job Classification Committee's recommendation as stated.
Which means that we denied her request.
So if we want to change it a couple years, we can, or we'll know about it earlier.
True.
Basically, it's because she didn't get it in soon enough, you're saying? Basically. She just didn't get it in quick enough before the budget...
Well, that was current among feeling, yes.
Yeah, I guess I would say that included in her next budget next year, if she wants to do that.
Two years, because it's for general election.
Sure, yeah.
What prompted this? Was it additional responsibilities, or just...
Correct, as a result of, during a general election and the additional duties.
Last one more time.
I'll make a motion if we take the Job Committee's recommendation of denying the request.
Of the denial of the request, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Chase seconded. All in favor? We've got seven, zero for the denial. Thank you.
This is going to be fun. Okay. The next one, again, job class met on September twenty-fourth, and we were asked to consider a dollar an hour pay raise for the D Deputy Auditor to increase her hourly rate from nineteen dollars and eighty-one cents an hour to twenty dollars and eighty-one cents an hour, because she has taken on additional duties and more of a supervisory advisory position and training the ladies in the front part of the office, and helping to onboard new employees, so helping HR department. So that request was made to us by the auditor. We did, we, the Job Classification Committee, did agree to that, and we are recommending that that be approved. And again, that's the D Deputy from nineteen dollars and eighty-one cents an hour to twenty dollars and eighty-one cents an hour effective October twenty-sixth, which is the beginning of the next pay period. Discussion?
Questions or comments?
We're not being very consistent. We denied the last request because it was not asked for at budget time, and we're asking vote yes for this when it was not asked for at budget time.
Understood.
We're not setting a very good precedence.
Understood.
I'm with Pete, I would agree with that, I think that we need to wait until next budget time to consider this.
Any other comment? Since we do motions on the positive side, I will entertain a motion that we accept the Job Classification Committee's recommendation on the D Deputy in the auditor's office.
I'll make a motion.
Lori made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Phil seconded. All in favor? Motion denied.
Opposed.
Now opposed, excuse me.
How many is opposed? Four?
Three.
Three?
We've got a tie.
Who did it?
I'm against it.
Okay, there we go. Now we got, we got four to three, against, so opposed.
So the request is denied.
Request is denied.
I think one, not the other.
Okay. That's fine, that's, and this is fine, you guys, this is why all this comes before the entire council, because we're only three and we're bringing you information. Next. We've only got three more of these, you guys. Next, we, the Job Classification Committee, met just before our meeting this afternoon, because three department heads asked that we meet. This one is, the EMA Director was asking for two part-time deputy director positions, and she has money in her budget for a deputy director, and we, the committee, recommended that we approve what, the request, but for only one part-time deputy director in her office.
She wanted to like split the job between two people?
She wanted to split the job between two people. And she only has enough money in her budget for the deputy director for a part-time position.
I thought she was going to split like the twenty-four hours and the twelve hours.
Right.
Wouldn't it be a different money either way, right?
True. That's true.
So you're denying her request, is that what you're saying?
Well, we're denying the request of two part-time people, but approving that she could hire one part-time deputy.
But you should clarify, the two that she wants would equal the max hours of one.
Right, yeah.
She's not wanting two, at say twenty-five hours each.
Right.
She's wanting two at twelve and a half hours.
Right. So I mean, it ain't no different money-wise or nothing, if that's going to make her office work better, if she wants it that way, but I guess, never.
I hear you.
To me, if she got the money, it's only going to be the same amount either way, you got one or you got two taken after, you know, half the time, whatever. It's her office, and she's allowed to do as she wants.
Did the commissioners have these ahead?
No, this is us.
I said, no, they haven't, input at all?
Nope, they don't.
Well, it's already, it's in the salary ordinance, and it's approved to have an assistant.
It's approved for one. For one assistant.
Right, it's approved for one assistant.
But not for two. Right.
She's just asking for that position to be shared between two people.
Correct.
And what was your reasoning, your guys' reasoning for not?
Well, because the salary ordinance was approved for one deputy.
One part-time.
One part-time deputy.
One part-time, okay, gotcha.
I know from a management standpoint, the part-time, the ability to have more of them is fantastic, just because of scheduling, you know, like for the jail and things, you know, if we got that open, where you could get maybe two or three part-time people that would cover twenty-eight hours a week versus one person can't do that, or twenty-five hours a week, so from a management standpoint, I see exactly where she's coming from.
Okay.
I kind of thought she was maybe having trouble finding somebody that wanted to take on the entire responsibility, but she had a couple of people that would split it.
Right.
I don't have a problem with it per se, as long as it doesn't create a logistical nightmare about who's working and who's not.
And the scheduling.
That was my only concern.
Right.
The scheduling. As far as two people sharing the responsibility, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I think I'm fine with that as well, honestly.
If that's the case, then, and on the agenda tonight is an amendment for the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance, so the salary ordinance will then have to be amended to reflect that at our next meeting, if we decide to go with two part-time. Just saying.
To me, it's her thing, and money-wise, it ain't be different, if that's the way it's going to make it work better for her, she's in charge of it.
Then what I will do now is I will ask for a motion, again, just as this is read, and recommends retaining one part-time EMA deputy position and denies a second position. I will entertain a motion to accept this as it's written.
And the motion failed?
I'll get there.
Okay.
Come on, mom.
Sorry!
All right, and the motion failed? Do we, motions are filled with the two-part time?
Sure.
I'll entertain a motion to go with the two-part time as requested. Steve, motion to approve. Chase seconded. All in favor?
But this can't begin until the amendment on the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance next month is approved, we think. All right. The next one. The recorder, the recorder asked, the recorder's office has a full-time employee and a part-time employee, and she is asking that the part-time employee be made a full-time employee to, to, uh, back indexing of all transferable documents, going back to eighteen thirty-six. This process is going to take several more years to get all these documents into, in our Laredo system. So she is asking that the part-time person she currently has be made a full-time person. This is the recorder's office. And the Job Classification Committee's recommendation is that the recorder's office add another temporary part-time position to be paid from her perpetuation fund, beginning January one, twenty twenty-five, at the part-time rate in the twenty-five salary ordinance of seventeen dollars and two cents now. So we are suggesting, rather than making the part-time person full-time, add a second part-time person. That was our recommendation.
Our reasoning for that is because this is not a permanent job. Once these records are done, they're done. We thought it would be more cost-effective if she needs help to get it done, to add an additional part-time temporary employee, that once the job is done, that job is basically done. Instead of when you move, if we move someone up to full-time, how do you, how do you terminate them?
Right.
For, because they've worked themselves out of work, I mean, this just seems an easier, simpler way, and more cost-effective way to accomplish what she needs without creating problem down there.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion to go with the Job Classification Committee recommendation to add a temporary part-time position. Pete, motion to approve. Randy seconded. All in favor?
Okay, and the last, the Job Classification Committee met, the Communications Director asked that we consider eliminating from the assistant directors' salary, the years of service supplemental that is currently stated on the salary ordinance. And the Job Classification Committee denied that request, and because it's currently on the salary ordinance and has been paid to dispatchers for years of service, we denied
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? If not, I will entertain...
Can you explain why it was denied, I guess?
Cutting somebody's pay. True, just to cut somebody's pay. And, and the dispatchers have been rewarded for years of service. Well, as long as I've been on the council, so it's 12 years. So we felt like it was not hardly fair to take that away from an assistant director.
In my defense, that assistant director would be getting a $3,700 pay increase as is, where the director only is getting a $2,000 increase. So regardless of the 80 cents, whoever takes the position is already getting a significant pay increase, with or without the 80 cents. So obviously, it'd be up to the dispatcher that is going to be appointed the assistant, whether or not she's willing to take that 80 cents decrease, or whether she'd like to stay a dispatcher and keep that. Not that she'd be penalized for not, you know, for opting to keep it. But I mean, she's already getting a significant pay increase.
And respectfully, my position, I won't speak for anyone else. My position is that, I'm assuming the communications director is the person that does the scheduling. So if the director is concerned about the pay of the assistant director being too close to their salary, then don't schedule them overtime hours, and that would eliminate that concern.
In a perfect world, that sounds fantastic, but...
Noted. Thank you.
Since she's my employee, our employee, commissioners appoint her. You're gonna have to watch it because the assistant's gonna make more money than the director. That don't even make good sense. Every other department, the highway department, we put them salaried so that can't happen. So we need to look at if that's the way you wanna do it and pay her that way. She needs to be salaried, so she's not gonna make more money than the director makes.
And respectfully, are you talking about the assistant director?
Yes.
So respectfully, again, the assistant director would not have, would not incur the duties, the supervisory duties required to meet the criteria to be a salary-exempt employee.
Why?
Now, also, in the salary, in a proposed budget...
They're not boss when she's gone?
Yeah, she is a supervisor.
Be just like the county highway.
Yeah, the assistant would be a supervisor.
But it doesn't meet all the other qualifications.
Well, anyhow.
In the proposed budget, it shows $3,700. You are correct.
Somewhere else.
In the salary ordinance, it shows she got a dollar an hour, like every other hourly employee. So those, those numbers, that number is not correct. And also, I understand that's something we can look at next year. Barry and I have talked several times, and that may be something we need to look at next year. But I was public, in my private, I was a supervisor. I had 10 guys work for me, fantastic people. And I had two or three guys that made more money than I did just because they worked the overtime. They wanted the overtime. And they made more money than I did as a supervisor and as a salary employee. So I see your point, but I also see the other side of it as well. Now, is that something that we can look at next year, as we did with the sheriff's department this year? Absolutely. And Barry and I will be talking more about it.
I mean, just, it's unfortunate. I just didn't, you know, I didn't have anything to do with this budget, and it's, it's way off, so...
And, and I, like I say, when I talked with Barry, I told him, the timing was terrible. Everything. The EMA, you know, the previous director, Gail, leaving, all this at budget time. And we come into budget, yeah, the timing was terrible. But it is what it is. I'm sorry, but that's the way it works.
We'll look at it first.
But, but can we look at it next year? Absolutely.
Well, as the prior director, in, in defending Brittany, and working around the clock and multiple different things as assigned, then it's, in a perfect world for her for 40 hours, then she's done 40 hours.
Well, and what I'm saying though, Gail, is you left, with you leaving the position open, that's all. I'm not criticizing your work or your hours, no whatsoever, none whatsoever. I'm just saying, you left, budget time hit, we were transferring job classifications around. The timing was terrible to try to get, like Brittany said, she really didn't have input in her budget. So I can understand her frustration.
Zero.
Well, no, you didn't.
Not really, just zero.
And basically, Dawn didn't have much in hers either. Although she did have a couple more weeks involved in what Brittany had. So I can understand the frustration, absolutely. But I could say, is that something we can look at next year, as we did at the sheriff's department? I am 100% behind that.
I don't think anybody on the job classification committee wanted an assistant to make the same as the boss. But no one wanted to take someone's extra pay away that she's earned for years of service. I suggested it should be a salary position, and I was told the same thing you were, Rick. That, which I don't understand all the ins and outs, that she can't be made salary. But I thought that would be a way to fix it. The assistant director's put on salary similar to the highway, and then there's never an issue of, because really what it boils down to is if your assistant works a bunch of overtime, she could potentially make more money than you. We, we really can't dictate that. We can't take someone's pay away because they might work a lot of overtime. And I guess that's, that's gonna be kind of up to that particular department to ensure that is kept in check, was our general thought. I mean, it's, you gotta, you have to look at both sides. I understand your side, but you also have to look at an employee that's been here for north of 20 years, potentially losing money because she's advancing. That was kind of the general consensus. Well put.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the job classification committee as suggested. What did I do with that? Job classification recommends continuing the pay with supplemental wage for additional years of service, as outlined in the salary ordinance. I will entertain a motion to approve. That's it.
So moved.
Bill moved to approve.
I'll second.
Lori seconded. All in favor? Six zero. Chase abstains.
And that's all on the job classification committee. Thank you.
Number one, we will do the 24 salary ordinance. This is ordinance 10152024-D. This is the fourth amendment to the salary ordinance, the Fulton County, Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies for 2024.
I'm gonna interrupt you.
What are you doing?
We may not, so what was decided?
We need, we don't need to change it.
We don't need it.
Do we?
Because...
That's correct.
Right. Because the auditor, de-direct, that was denied. Is that, is that correct?
I believe that was the reason we were bending the...
Okay, and that's, that's the only reason, okay, so we don't need to, we don't need to do that.
Well, thank you for...
Sorry.
No, you're right, that would be since we denied it.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. And next is the adoption of the 25 salary ordinance, which we will have to amend next month, right? Since we're gonna start on January 1st.
Right.
So we'll have to amend, but we do have to adopt this one.
Yes, yes.
And this is ordinance 09172024. This is ordinance of County of Fulton, Indiana, salary schedule and compensation policies for 2025. And I'll read just the first part of this. Whereas the County of Fulton, Indiana is an equal opportunity employer, and whereas it is the intent of Fulton County, Indiana to comply with applicable federal and state of Indiana employment laws and regulations, and whereas Indiana Code 36-2-5-3, Section 3, Subsection A, establishes that the county fiscal body shall fix the compensation of officers, deputies, and other employees whose compensation is payable from the County General Fund, County Highway Fund, County Health Fund, County Park and Recreation Fund, Aviation Fund, and any other fund from which the county auditor issued warrants for compensations, for compensations, I'm sorry. This includes the power to fix a number of officer, deputies, and other employees described in classified positions and services, adopt schedules of compensation, and hire or contract with persons to assist in the development of compensation. And whereas Fulton County is contracted with the Professional Human Resources Consulting Forum Job Classification and Fair Labor Standards Act audit. Whereas Fulton County Council wishes to establish compensative schedule and pay policies. So has everyone had a chance to look over the schedule for 2025?
And this is the third and final reading.
Yes, that's the third, third and final reading, thank you. Any questions or comments? Pete?
It's more of a clerical question.
Sure.
And this is not because I'm against doing it, I want to preface that. But we're giving the sheriff's department to try to bring those guys up, so... And we're using some fund, some money from the out-of-county inmate fund, correct? To do that?
That is what was proposed, yeah.
Okay. Again, I have no problem with this, and he's done. But if I remember correctly, when that fund was established, wasn't there some verbiage in there that it has to be, any, before any money's spent, it has to be unanimously agreed upon, or at least, I wanna say it's approved by commissioners and council, correct, or am I...
That's an amendment to that ordinance. It had, no, just the ordinance itself, if you wanted to amend the ordinance, it had to be unanimously approved by both of you.
Only reason I'm asking is I remembered something like that, and I wanted to make sure we were doing this right. Where if we needed the commissioners' approval to do it, we had it. That's all I'm, so we don't have a problem down the road.
No, valid, very valid question.
I'm not at all trying to deny that or interfere with that going through. I just wanna make sure we're doing it right.
I believe that I'm in agreement with Travis. As if we want to amend the agreement, it has to be unanimous.
That could be. I just, I remember something that was discussed about that. I just wanted to make sure we had our ducks in a row before we move forward, that's it.
The way the ordinance, as I recall it, has to be mutually agreed upon between us, the county and the sheriff, as to what the funds are used for. But it has nothing, just the amendment of the, the amendment of the ordinance would require the commissioners' approval along with the councils.
Well, if that's the case, then my concern is...
I thought it was the other way.
I don't know. I just, I just remember something that we were doing.
Well, I, I guess, I, I thought it was if we needed to amend the ordinance.
Because we, we did the, we specified those funds this, this summer for the 7015, 15, and that had to go through both of you.
Yeah, that all went, I was gonna say, that went through all of us.
But this is just using that money. It has to be mutually agreed upon between the sheriff and the council for the use of the money.
Like I said, I didn't mean the money that watered.
No, 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 you're, you're fine, Pete. That's an actual question.
I just wanna make sure we have everything in the proper order to do it. So there's not a problem.
I think we do.
Okay.
I think we do.
That was my only question, and it's not?
A good one, and, and good for the, good for the record, so a good one.
Yeah, I, like I said, I'm 100% doing what we're doing. I just wanted to make sure we're doing it properly.
Yeah, I agree.
And plus, for everyone here, Travis worked hard at getting his budget and tightening his budget up to help us out, so we could help the deputies out too.
Yeah, it took some work to get here. I just wanted to make sure we're doing it right.
Public as well.
The last thing I want is we approve this, and then there's a problem, and we gotta start over. That's all I was...
No, absolutely, yeah, I agree.
No starting over.
I know. I understand. It's not an easy task.
Okay.
Because we do wanna do this correctly.
Correct, that's all I'm...
So any other questions or comments? If that's the case, I will entertain approval of the 2025 salary ordinance. This first reading, or is this a...
This is the last one.
Last reading, okay.
The third one. So, so moved.
Bill moved to approve, second. Pete seconded. All in favor? Seven zero. Thank you, and we will...
I know facts.
Okay, got that done, got that done. Seth, here comes the bus.
All right, guys. Good luck.
Thank you. No news, it's good news, I'm not here, right? Bad news is I'm here. We had a situation on Mud Lake where I had a contractor go in and dip the 765 Lawson Heiser ditch. Had some beaver dam in there, he was doing some work upstairs, or upstream privately for somebody. He called and said, hey, the water's not going down. Knew there was beaver dams and hard ditch. So we actually just put a trap in it a week prior. He called, the tracker, traps like it was done. He asked I go and clean the dams and, and while I'm there, swap the ditch. Yes, go ahead. By doing this, I lowered the lake level item, lowered the lake level, supposedly item 12 inches. Talking to my, the person I had out there trying to be, he thought there was 10, 12 inches of water coming back down. Nonetheless, water's down 12 inches, give or take. And the people that live on that lake, it's Mud Lake, there's, I think, five people that live on, on, on it. They are upset because the water's down, and they rightfully should. The issue I have is the contractor that did this, the bill was agreed to be $6,000, that was done before. It cost quite a bit for him to get out there and madder to get this down. Since damages were done to these people that live on the lake, I don't know if we should consider taking it out of the Lawson Heiser account, which is our normal practice. I talked with commissioners, they said to reach out to you guys and ask about possible rain day funds or something like that situation. Way we stand right now, IEDM and DNR have been notified, and we are working with IEDM and DNR. I got an update this morning from Krista Standard from BNR. And tomorrow morning, I go out and start taking shots and trying to plan and put in motion. Back to the contractor, right now, again, it's $6,000. And not sure what's gonna happen in the future, as far as if I'll have to go back and remove some of the soils that were taken out. If I do, that'll be additional cost. Talking with Emerson Harriman at IEDM, I believe that I will not have to do that. I gotta get special permits done. I don't know what the permits will cost at this point. The permits, again, up to my drainage board, why you'll take them out of the Lawson Heiser ditch, because permits, what happened come out of that account anyways, when, when being done. Now, back to, again, the elephant in the room, $6,000 to the contractor that went out under my instruction to dip this ditch. The watershed at the Lawson Heiser ditch is 1,085 acres, okay? The people affected on this area is about 3.5% of their ground from the road on, on the lake property. They may own some ground on the other side of the road, including that, but still 3.5%. 3.5% of the $6,000 bill is about $210. It's not much, but it's still slapping, you know, taking that account they put money into to maintain these ditches and all this, and damages were done.
He said they will fight us on paying, that they won't pay.
They, yes.
Whether they will or not, I don't know. They have threatened lawsuit, so...
They, the property owners?
The property owners.
They have threatened lawsuits. We have not seen any, not missed our papers, not seen anything. Yesterday at our, at our transport meeting, they were all in here talking with us. Again, they, they balked in me to come on the property and see the damages, which I have not done due to the threatened lawsuit. I am, I did make contact with one of them this morning, this afternoon. I'm gonna talk to DNR. I have a meeting there tomorrow at 9:00. But due to the possible lawsuit that we have been told, one of the commissioners has been told, we, we don't feel... uh, we, we don't feel, again, we should take this out of the Lawson Heiser account. If we don't do that, we gotta find the funds somewhere.
This, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to follow, so, uh, this six thousand dollars to pay the contractor, you don't want to take it out of the.
Out of the account of that ditch.
Whatever, whatever.
Yeah, fine.
You want to leave that in there.
Correct, it's, it's a slap.
Because they, they will be paying for it because they get assessed on that ditch, see?
Okay.
So they're paying as part of the ditch assessment.
Okay.
If we pay for it out of the ditch assessment, they're paying for it, and I said they'll fight us on it, they will, they will not pay.
And by doing what we did, we did benefit people upstream, and we did remove the dams that need to be taken out, and we did do some, we did do some good.
Right.
But we also did some.
Right.
What, what are the damages? I mean, what, lower end of the lake, I get that.
Lowering the lake.
Is that what you're saying?
So they did get their boats, one, one does not have their boat out yet. The others, they get their boats out, they said they had to get the tractor to get them out because the water's going down fast. Um, but as far as that, you know, it's a lake property, they, it's for recreational, they want to have a beautiful, you know, view out their window, not see foot or two of mud, and then have to get their dogs heading further into the water.
So obviously, the lake has been higher than it's supposed to be for quite some time.
Possibly, yes. D N R does not have a lake level for this lake.
I was, I was just getting ready to ask that, if we know.
D N R does not have a lake level for this lake.
Okay, that's, that was gonna be my question, because if we lowered it a foot because it needed lowered, that's kind of what had to happen. But if it's lower to foot than normal, then that's kind of.
So it's lower a foot than normal, the question is how long, so these dams have been here, I mean, a while. Beavers go build dams, they can take it out and gradually build up, okay?
Right.
So over the past thirty, forty years, has it gone to three, four, or five inches? It may have.
Sure, that doesn't happen overnight.
It doesn't happen overnight, okay? But, but to the point as when this was done, according to I D M, it's lower twelve inches.
But we don't know how much we've helped everybody upstream by getting rid of the beaver dams, how many thousands of acres are now properly draining?
Correct, correct. Um, the only thing I'll say is with the lake at this level, the lake did not come up to this level overnight.
Right.
It's been there a couple of years, I have not had complaints upstream of the water speeding into the lake, except for, uh, there is a lady by the name Kathy Rich. She's on the upside of the lake, she has a open ditch that drains into this. Uh, that ditch is not on maintenance, she called and asked to have her ditch cleaned, I said we cannot do that, because there's no account. I gave her contractor's name, she called in privately, he did it. This was the contractor, then called me and said, hey, the water's not getting away. It's too high, her ditch isn't working because the lake level's too high.
Exactly.
Can I go remove the dams and swap the ditch? So, again, back, back to the six thousand dollars.
So six thousand dollars.
Do what?
Mud Lake?
No, Mud Lake. No, not South Mud, Mud Lake, it's up northeast of Akron.
Oh, okay.
So do I understand right, you're wanting us to come up with six thousand dollars to pay this contractor, so you don't have to charge landowners for?
Correct.
And this is a permanent situation, we're just wanting us to pay it?
Correct, so, and what, what we're hoping is, um, again, I'm gonna go out and establish lake level, or go, maybe with them, we see where I thought the lake level was, what they think the lake level was, for any kind of evidence, what the lake level was tomorrow, start getting shots on that, come up with a plan. I do have a plan in place, if they approve it, I mean, we cannot do anything until D N R says yay or nay.
How soon do you need to pay this contractor?
Um, it does not have to be tomorrow by any means, it can be three, four weeks, or, he, he knows the situation, obviously.
Is some of the impact being caused by the drought that we're in?
No, no, not necessarily.
But we don't know what the six thousand could potentially turn into.
We don't know, it could be at six thousand, um, it could be more than that, if I D M makes me go back to remove some of the soils.
From the beaver dams and the ditch.
Well, from the dredging and, and the beaver dams.
So most likely, maybe we need to be in a holding pattern until you see.
And, and that's fine, we can stay in a holding pattern, I just wanted to come up front with you guys and tell you the situation that's going on.
I would question that we wait, but if need be, we would pay the money out of rainy day for that six thousand bill that he has to avoid the problems, and then if it gets resolved, the money can be placed back into rainy day.
When you start, when you start talking lawsuits and stuff, that six thousand could get out of hand in a hurry.
Correct, and again, they're, you know, the lady I talked to today, she was very polite and, and said, you know, come out and be with us tomorrow, we'll try and get the plan going as soon as possible, that way, the rains ever do come back, we got it in place.
It'd be proactive.
Correct.
Yeah, which is a thing to do.
Correct, and D N R just had their meeting this morning.
But should the contractor want paid?
Well, he does, but, and Seth and I actually talked about this, and he says that the contractor is, can wait till November.
Yes, he knows the situation.
But for him to be paid in November, we have, we have to approve it to move forward tonight.
Yeah.
For it to be paid out of rainy day, that's a process, right?
Well, and, and I, I say that, so if it came out of our meeting, out of the drainage board meeting, or the second Monday of every month, so it wouldn't be too much difference to wait the extra week. Like, so he, I, when I say pay in November, we could pay him even at our meeting until we have our meeting, it's not like we pay November first. It's the same process with you guys, we have to approve it, go through, et cetera, it's not that.
But, but what I'm saying is, if we, if we don't make a motion to approve and pay it out of rainy day tonight, and wait until November, then you won't see the money until December.
Yeah, that's wrong.
Beginning of it, so. I did, I did not ask him about December, I just said, can we wait a month, and he was all, that's possible, he knows the situation.
So why not, why don't we approve it out of rainy day? Approve to pay it. I'll make a motion that we, yes, that we pay the six thousand that Seth needs.
Exactly, we just need it.
It's the same thing I just did.
Okay. Now, it's mine, make a motion to pay it now.
Okay.
To approve it, to approve it now.
I can amend that to that if that helps.
I entertain a motion that we approve it out of rainy day. Phil has made the motion, but each second, all in favor of paying the money out of rainy day, seven zero.
Thank you, and I'll keep you up to date if anything else comes forward, as far as.
Bring us a check back, you know, six thousand.
That's what I can do. Thank you, guys. Seth White.
Seth White?
Yep.
You mean Beaver Pouch aren't worth six thousand, but?
Uh, not more.
All right, thank you. For updates, Mr. Fish. Wake up.
I'm sorry. Okay, um, good evening.
Good evening.
I'll bring you up to date with the work activities, we've been patching holes, running the brush chopper. Um, we've been running shoulders down our new paved roads, paved roads, applied the bioseal on our community crossing grants. Um, Brooks has completed the nine hundred west project, the six hundred north project, the four hundred north project, and the state road, or the seventy-five north up to, um, and including Lake Bruce. So all their, um, community, um, C C M G projects have been completed, what they're paving. Um, they're deciding now the shop is done, I think it's looking very nice.
It looks good.
So I think that brings me up to my last point here, the appropriations that you'll see come through tonight. Um, the two will be for, um, the repair of the shop is sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from the rainy day to repair building and equipment. And this is for the siding, the insulation, and the two new windows installed. And the second appropriation is for sixty-nine thousand to come from cum cap development to repair building and equipment for the new material, or new metal roof over Kiwana, and the balance of the expenses at the Rochester shop. And this is an appropriation that we did last month, but we had, um, we had to cancel that, and it's a redo.
Right.
That's why we're bringing it again over.
Yeah, we know.
Okay, just so everybody has an understanding. I believe that's it for me, unless you got any other questions?
You got a single axle sitting out there waiting on a bed?
Yes, and another one's on its way, and will both be taken over to W A Jones for upfitting here. They think hopefully in December we'll get our slots put in to have them upfitted.
Hmm, good deal.
Any questions for John?
No.
Public?
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Mr. Lab?
Blackner's done, the paving's done, and Nipsco put the gas in.
Wow, how bad, after thirty years.
And the last bill, uh, actually, point two. The last bill's been made too.
Do we have any fish in the sea on the Otter lots over there? You can just say yes or no.
There's two very nice possibilities.
Good.
Um, it's gonna take a while to negotiate out some of what they want. But, uh, yeah, there's two really good possibilities, and, um, there's a third making inquiries.
Great, good deal.
All they have to do is like a field attorney, spend his, or so on.
It's a lot more attractive to go back there and look at a lot than it ever has been.
It, it is, um, I'll just leave it at that for right now.
Yeah, it's finally, it's, it's finally becomes up and it's appealing instead of a nice.
Yeah, and, you know, the, um, we've been, we've been working with these companies, and, uh, they're pretty, they're very stable. You know, it looks like it'll, uh, it's gonna go, but it's just gonna take some time, at this point in time. Um, we have a deadline coming up on, uh, some of the Lilly money for the arts program, um, coming up at the end of this month. Um, the arts program is, is been, uh, put on hiatus. Uh, they, the Lilly wants art strategies created for each of the several planning districts in the state, so, um, our group is, uh, coming up with a plan on how to approach that, what to make the application. On the black side, we're moving forward, so by the end of the month, I'll have three more projects put into the bin. Uh, one here, uh, one in Fulton, and, well, two here and one in Fulton, uh, that I've been asked to, to kick in, in new. So, um, we're moving forward on that side of it too. There's nothing really to report on the industrial part right now, we're still talking about roads and whatnot. So that's still moving forward. The housing, uh, project, um, we've actually found what we think is a really good location. I don't want to let that go right now, because we're working on prices. But, um, that looks like, uh, we finally found a good one. We're waiting on the other, uh, developers to hear whether or not they've received their, um, tax credit breaks, and how many of them, how are gonna get them, whatnot, all that stuff. Uh, I thought we would have heard about that by now, but, uh, it's the state, you understand? Uh, what I gave you, um, the first item is just a press release on, uh, that, um, shows that, um, Duke Energy, we have been working with on the tabletop, on the industrial part, uh, is completed. They just, just gave us a press release on, uh, put out a press release that, uh, they think it's a good program, think it's a good site. So that's just the information purposes for you. The next piece of paper is an executive summary of, um, the hotel study. And it's pretty small, about four pages. But if you will go to page three and see, uh, estimated increase in sales tax, lodging tax, all these other revenue sources, those figures are over a five-year period, so if you want to figure out what phantom is divided by five is what it is. Um, and then the back page, the color section that you see, is amenities, this comes from a survey that the company ran, and, uh, this just shows what kind of survey or amenities, uh, they're wanting in a hotel. We're still negotiating with them, um, I don't know what happened to the copier, I gotta be honest. When I saw that, it was kind of difficult to, um, but we're, we're talking with, um, a company on this, and, uh, negotiations are still working, so it's still in sand is what it is. Um, next one is, um, I've been asked to host, um, an educational seminar, be about an hour and a half, sometime during the week of November twelfth through fifteenth, uh, fourteen. And it's on, um, alternative energy sources. It's purely, expect to live, it's purely, um, educational, they're not gonna try and talk, tell you one source of energy is better than another, but they're gonna just talk about different types of energy sources. The state's getting really big into alternative energy sources, so once we get some dates nailed down, I'll let everybody know. They're asking actually, what they want is, um, uh, this is aimed for you guys, public officials. And, uh, so we'll probably wind up having to open it to the public at the same time, in order not to violate the open door law. Um, next thing, and Phil, I'm almost done.
So, so give me the dates again for the alternative.
Uh, the week of twelve, thirteen, fourteen, November.
November twelve, thirteen, or four, somewhere in there.
Uh, that, yeah, that's what, that's the week when they can come in, we're just trying to figure out.
Okay.
Where to put it and what day to do it on.
Thank you.
Uh, it will be a lunch, and we'll, we'll host a lunch.
Okay.
Um, the other thing is, we are at the same time, we've been offered, um, another Korean training session. This time it's aimed at, um, the educational system, the restaurants, and the hospitals. Uh, but anybody can come, it's open to the public. This won't be like the firefighters program was, this is going to be more cultural, um, how they act in a restaurant, what happens if there's a medical emergency, something along that line. So we're trying to work on that, that's, unfortunately, that's gonna be about the same timeline too, uh, as the other one, of course. Um, the last one is, uh, I'm working with the state, or filling out an application right now, on, um, what is this thing called anymore? It's a rural education development program, something like that, it's called RED, and it's strictly planning. Uh, what would happen is, we get a group of about forty people together, and, uh, figure out what the problems, in our case Fulton County, has. Uh, we will, if we are awarded, there will only be three awards across the entire state, but if we were to be awarded, then we will go through a s- a six-month intensive, uh, program where we would actually get very specific about projects that Fulton County wants to tackle and, and work on, and then we would create the steps necessary to do that. And, uh, so the deadline is, um, again, at the end of the month. And so I'm, I'm working on that every day to get that taken care of, and I think that's pretty much everything right now. The ready-to, uh, program, like I said, we'll submit the, uh, uh, application, uh, at the end of the month, but we won't hear anything before the end of the year on that. But, uh, that's actually moving forward, whereas the Lilly side of it is kind of stalled.
Any questions for Mike?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Another copy of that.
Travis.
I'll be brief. I emailed out a copy of the, uh, reports last week. Any questions that I can answer? So, hundred and twenty-six inmates this morning, forty-seven from Grant County, nineteen from Howard County, and a whole six federal inmates. We billed for a hundred and seventeen, four hundred and fifty-two thousand last year, last year, last month for out-of-county inmates. Estimates for the two thousand twenty-five Tahoe's, uh, they're, they're just coming in now, but they're just flipping just a little over two thousand dollars more than what they were twenty-four, which is. but they're just flipping just a little over two thousand dollars more than what they were in twenty-four, which is great news. Because we were really scared that the Totos were gonna price themselves out because they're the only reliable police car out there right now. You'll see appropriation coming through for Garage and Motor for me. That's thanks to Dodge, short on money. We're down to like four hundred dollars in our Garage and Motors, so that gets to the end of the year. Food service, new contract for food service, I'll present to the commissioners at their next meeting. But it looks like meals are only gonna go up four percent next year. They were expecting four point two percent, but actually came in at four percent, which is roughly between nine and ten cents a meal, depending on how many inmates we're holding. So, other than that, that's all I've got.
Say again what your additional appropriation was for?
Garage and Motor. Jumped the Ringos.
Thank you.
They should, they had a lot of problems.
They had, the state police finally got away from, they've got, I think they said they've got three hundred and fifty they still have to, they've already bought. They've got to issue those, but they put in an order for a hundred and fifty Totos for next year, so. Why they decided to hop on, why they thought they were gonna have different Ringos than we have is beyond me. So anyway, and I mean, knock on wood, we haven't had any issues with the Totos. I mean, regular maintenance, we haven't had any mechanical issues with them at all, so. Well, two thousand twenty-four, I mean, we've got, someone's got some miles on them, so I, yeah, we haven't had any mechanical issues with them, so. Which with the Ringos, twenty thousand miles will be starting to have any issues with those, so.
Funny story, got oil change at Dodge today, guess what was in there? Another, another small community's to police Ringo.
Yep, yeah. And they know that they've got any issue. It's what it is, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy?
No, sir.
Brittany?
Just a couple things. First, officially, last week I'm Fulton trained, so I'm happy with the timeframe that I was able to get that done so quickly. Dispatch has been very sick. We're working on a skeleton crew the way it is, so luckily I got trained to where I can sit in dispatch quite a bit and work in the center. Now they've given the gift to me for not feeling good, so that's awesome. We did hire two new people and they both will start on Monday. One will be on the night shift and one will be on the day shift, so we're excited about that. At the last city council meeting, the city, the city council signed the agreement for, or the interlocal agreement for the dispatching for the city. I believe that's with the county attorney, but I haven't heard anything. So I issued an email to her today to follow up on that because really, we need to have that done shortly. And aside from that, I don't have anything.
Questions standing for Brittany? Get on. Jerry, last but not least.
Okay. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you. Just wanna give you an update on what's happening in the coroner's office in Fulton County. According to our vital records registrar, Carrie Randstad, I found out today that we've had a hundred and twenty-six deaths in Fulton County for the year. Of that, seventy females and fifty-six males. Then our coroner's services to the county, we've actually investigated forty-nine deaths. And of that, twenty-two females and twenty-seven males. So that's right at about thirty-nine percent of all the deaths that occur here in Fulton County that we're investigating. Most of those are natural. We have had eight accidents, including three falls, two overdoses, three motor vehicle accidents, and a couple of those were relative to influence of drugs as well. We've conducted three labs that we've sent out to Woodlawn for different types of things, such as maybe like glucose level, troponin for the cardiac, or D-dimer. And then we've also sent in about thirteen toxicologies to Axis in Indianapolis. We've also conducted thirteen autopsies. And then we also have another one that we had to pay for from 2023 that was then, last summer, we got billed for it in January. So I wanted to let you know I was able to go to the coroner's training board meeting. We had a great meeting last month, went over our conference that we had in June. We had over three hundred and twenty people there, mainly coroners and deputy coroners. There was a few others that come and attend that too. There's some law enforcement that comes sometimes and maybe some medical. We had our EMA quarterly meeting about a week ago. That was very good, things were moving right along with EMA. And you heard about some of the things tonight earlier. L E P C, that's coming up and that's under the EMA arm. That's the local emergency planning committee. And what that is, is we're getting ready to do the in-person exercise. That'll be held a week from Saturday down in Grass Creek, across from the fire station on the lot there. So I can't reveal all the things because it's gotta be kind of a surprise for those that are there because it's, you know, lots of action. And that'll involve, like everybody from the hospital to Parkview EMS, to the fire departments, coroner's office, and everybody that works or is like the EMA volunteers as well. So we're excited to do that and you might, and so that's what we do on Saturday morning. If you hear things, scanner traffic, we're gonna be working with communications too. And we might even have a couple of communications people on site, we're hoping. We'll see what happens. But anyway, so it gives us a chance to get, you know, hone our strategies for emergencies like this. In addition to that, we also get to, this helps with different grants and things like that for the county for later this year, and some of them are heavy-duty grants. So it's important that we do this. We also have to incorporate what's called a tier-two chemical. And that tier-two chemical, we've had that already okay. They've got some evaluators and everything's looking good for that. So we're very excited about that happening. So if you wanna cruise by next Saturday morning between eight and noon, you'll see us all down there at Grass Creek. Also, I have a public service announcement. November third is coming up, that's just before the election. And Abi-Nabi Township Fire Department is hosting their breakfast. And I'll be there to help them with that too. But come on down because it's delicious and it's all you can eat. So that's on a Sunday, and that's right after the time change, so you can really sleep in another hour and then come down to Abi-Nabi with all the Indians there. So wanted to let you know that. I want everybody to be safe. We got Halloween coming up, watch out for the wee ones when dusk is dropping upon us. And everybody stay safe out there. So anyway, have a good evening and everybody be safe.
Any questions for Jerry?
Thank you, thank you, Jerry. You're welcome.
Is that this coming Saturday?
No, it's a week from Saturday. Yeah, it's the twenty-sixth of October. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we get everybody? If so, next on agenda is the minutes. Hope everyone had a chance to read the minutes. My suggestion is we table the approval of the minutes until they can be corrected. There are several corrections, and with the state board of accounts getting us on a couple of issues we had last year, I guarantee you they will pull our sheets again, and I wanna be sure that we are correct. So that is my suggestion. There are two or three times in here I made motions. I can suggest, I can opinionize, I cannot make a motion. So I have talked to the auditor and we're going to get these corrected. That's my suggestion, the board can make up their own.
Sounds good to me.
Do what you said.
I'll entertain a motion to table. Steve's motion to table the minutes. Lori second, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Okay, got that taken care of. Next, the transfers.
People, we're sorry.
First transfer, county general to the drainage board. Three hundred dollars from continuing education, seven thousand from engineering, and six hundred from published legals to office supplies, three hundred. Office supplies, seven thousand, and office supplies, six hundred, to purchase better office equipment. I wish you'd have stuck around to explain that.
Yeah, because it's over the amount where they're supposed to come and get bids.
So are there any other questions? Rick, can you, for the drainage board, can you?
I don't know what you, Brad, Dask, I don't know. You have to ask him.
Okay, well, like I said, I wish you'd have stuck around for this. But anyway, I will entertain a motion to approve. Commissioners have signed it.
Then I'll move to approve.
Phil moved to approve, we have a second. Steve seconded, all in favor? Seven zero. Next, county general to the surveyor. Gas, oil, and lube, four hundred dollars. Survey seminar, one hundred. Photo and blueprint, two ninety-four fifty-eight. Road school, one hundred, needs to be transferred to office supplies, four hundred. Monuments and reference signs, one hundred. Monuments and reference signs, two ninety-four fifty-eight. And monuments and reference signs, one hundred. End of year budget transfers to buy work supplies for outside work done. Again, commissioners have signed it.
Clicker's mode.
So absolutely, I will entertain a motion to approve. Randy moved, second. Pete seconded, all in favor? Seven zero. And he gets one more. County general to the surveyor. Maintenance and equipment, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents. To monuments and reference signs, one hundred and ninety-two twenty-five. To buy equipment for reference sign and section corner outside work. Again, commissioners have approved this. I entertain a motion to approve, Steve moved to approve, we have a second.
All second.
Phil seconded, all in favor? Seven zero. That is that. Next, we have some additional appropriations. Now these we have to sign. Out-of-county general to the sheriff. And he alluded to this earlier, Garage and Motor, fifty thousand dollars. Not enough budget in 2024. Any questions? I will entertain a motion to approve. Steve moved to approve, we have a second. Randy seconded, all in favor? Seven zero. And again, we sign. Next is, somebody?
County highway.
Out of the Coombe Cap Fund for Highway Mechanic. And this goes to the building repair and equipment, sixty-nine thousand dollars. This is for the new metal roof and repairs at Kiwanah Barn. And as John said, and the additional for the Fulton County Highway Barn, which I drove by the barn. It looks good and it was neat. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Pete moved. Phil seconded, all in favor? Seven zero. This is from the rainy day fund to the highway mechanic. Repair building and equipment, sixty-seven thousand five hundred. Installation, siding, and window repair on the shop at the main barn. Any questions? No, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Chase moved to approve, he a second. Pete seconded, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. And last but not least, that silly Kiwanah Public Library. This is an additional appropriation. Comes out of debt service. Assuming this is out of your debt service?
It's going into debt service.
Going into debt service.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred dollars, additional amount requested, fifteen hundred dollars? And just real quick.
Yes, sir.
Not to put you on the spot, just a real quick.
So they moved the date of that payment, like I was telling you the last month I was here. And that payment makes it shorter what I had in our reserves. And in our reserves, I'm sitting on twenty-eight thousand dollars. But with the appropriations that was previously approved in the budget last year, it'll still be fifteen hundred dollars short.
Okay.
So that's a recommendation from the BLGF that I'm not short at that payment.
We understand that.
Any questions? No, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Phil moved to approve, he a second. Pete seconded, all in favor? Seven zero. This is a little different. Now, is this one of the things you need a copy of then?
Yes, sir.
Can we get everything together?
Yes, please.
Okay.
No worries, no worries.
No, we got it all right here. Okay, that's all we have. Any old business, Pete?
No, sir.
Randy?
No.
Chase?
No, sir.
Lori?
No.
Steve?
No.
Phil?
I have none.
I have none. Auditor's office. Any new business, Pete?
No.
Randy?
No.
Chase?
No, sir.
Lori?
I'm kinda waiting to hear about a redevelopment commission meeting. Have not heard about one. I think it's gonna take a commissioner to.
Initiate it.
Probably initiate it, so I haven't.
I need to speak on your new business.
Just want you to know I'm waiting because in case you guys got the letter.
I do too, so.
Okay.
Steve? Phil?
The only thing I will mention is the county's portion of the host fee fund for June and July is seventy-three thousand, three hundred and six dollars and forty-five cents.
What was that again, please?
Seventy-three thousand, three hundred and six dollars and forty-five cents.
June and July.
Over June and July. That's all I have.
And I will acquiesce to Rick on the new business, and then we'll batter back and forth, I'm sure. Any new business from the auditor's office? And with new business, Rick, you're on the stage.
Kinda, on Lori's subject, I don't know if you guys have seen, I've been sending you stuff from Jason Sinler, Baker Tilly. One of the things that is supposed to be done is a TIF spending plan. And it's gotta be done by the first of December. It's brand new this year. And where we got TIF at, if you guys was reading the email, is out on Forest Street to pay the bond. So you've gotta have that money recorded and go through a process or you cannot use that TIF to pay the bond payment. So I've got Jason working on that with us. I hope, hope that's okay. I kinda talked to Phil and Ron one day about if it was coming up and if we're kinda under the gun. He says there has not been no plan done yet. So that was one of the things I wanted to talk to you about. You notice he had a couple more things listed that we can take as options if we want to later on. I had him spell out some stuff. And a couple of things I'm talking about is helping maybe Kathy with the budget and helping Kathy if she's got any problems from time to time. He has in there that he could come in at the first of the year and train ever who wanted to listen. I know you got new council members coming in to be budgeting 101, it's about two or three-hour class he could give. And I think that bill was not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars for doing that. But if you read that, he's got some steps in there if you guys are interested on doing some stuff. I know Kathy would like to have some stuff for help. You know, he, he signed a plan when all, everything's due, which you've gotta have everything lined out so, so he can keep her on track. But I just wanted to bring that up. We may need some money to at least pay for the TIF deal to get it going, and then we can decide on what you guys want after that or what everybody agrees on wanting after that.
Well, that was a key question, this is where we're gonna get the money from, call for your suggestions. But, I mean, I think Jason would be an asset, there's no doubt about it. Especially when it comes to budgeting, to help Kathy out. We've, Kathy and a. Kathy and, I know Phil and I and Kathy have talked about it, bringing in to help the new council people, and also the new department heads that are coming on board. The TIF thing is something new, and that's, that's gotta be developed by the redevelopment committee, that's before it even, that's got commissioners in to us, so we're...
Yeah, we're kind of under the gun on that, it kind of got sprung on us a while back, I didn't even know about it. So it is supposed to run through the redevelopment commission, so Brian was in on that conversation. We had a telephone call with Jason yesterday from Baker Tilly, so he understands it, so I don't know what the process is, so, you know, Brian, I'll tell Brian to get in touch with the committee, I'm sure he got the, I know he got the emails, and I, did everybody get, did I send, did I get everybody, everybody got sent them?
Yeah.
They can read them, too, and kind of understand what he's talking about a little bit, so.
No, and I'd understand, though, that with what Jason sent us, you guys have to approve that first, because you guys approve all contracts. Is that, that is correct?
Well, yeah, and the way I understand the contract, and it was kind of last minute, like I said, we've been trying to scramble to get everything together. He set that at two o'clock today, or one-thirty today, or whatever, and I sent it on as quick as I could, give you guys a chance to look at it. I don't know, I, I think we can sign it and then pick and pick what, what we want at a later date, he's just offered his services, it's just kind of the scope of work, is that the way everybody took it out?
I haven't had a chance to read it, so.
That was the scope, he just, the scope of what they can offer, and he said that the council can pick and, or commissioners, whoever, can pick and choose what they want.
And it was fairly, it was fairly broad.
Yes, it was very broad.
Yes.
Which we asked him to make it broad.
A bit later, be based on, on needs.
Yes, yes.
And that's, that's what, we, we just have...
I'm assuming that's what you were asking for.
Yes, right, right. So I, I don't know how you guys want to handle it, what your thinking is, or what, you know, put a dollar amount every so often on it, if Kathy needs it, you know, you've got ten thousand dollars, when that money runs out, you gotta come back to us and explain why you need X, Y, and Z, or how you want to handle it, that, that's why I'm bringing it to you, and I don't know that it has to be done tonight, but I think you need it.
Yeah, because I mean, I haven't even had a chance to read it yet.
Yeah, so read it over, look it over.
Yeah, it's not anything that has to be done tonight, and we just, we're prepared to bring it to you.
But, but the only thing...
We're gonna do the contract, we can't, we don't do contracts.
The only thing, like I said, it's under the gun that we've got to get moving on, is the TIF spending plan's gotta be done by the first of December, or you cannot spend the money for the bond, is the way I take it.
It has to be, it has to be submitted in gateway by December first. If it is not, you get wrote up for being late, and you will not be allowed to spend any of the TIF money.
Am I not correct, is it, for years, and don't tell me the exact number, because it was before I got here, but we've been subsidizing the bond payment? Is that, okay, thanks Lori, I forgot, that's right.
And he, he has got the numbers in, in that, he looked it up to see how much the bond payment was, and how much it was taken in, he's got the numbers in that, when you read it, Ron, you can...
Well, I thought we were close to paying that bond off.
I think you're, I think you're with, yeah, within two years. I think there's only two payments left, if I understood the conversation.
Sounds right. It does sound right.
Okay. So even though we get that money, we can't use it to pay the bond off if we don't get this inmate?
If this is not submitted, it has, what you're anticipating spending has to be in that plan, and has to be, just has to be in gateway by December first.
And, and, and that has to be submitted by the redevelopment commission?
Re-development commission puts it together, but it has to be submitted by the auditor.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I didn't mean, because they can enter it in gateway.
Well, I don't, we could have Jason submit it, too, I think.
Well, yeah, you could for that, yeah.
He, he sent us the forms, he sent us the stuff to start the process going.
One thing I did read when I approved it was the fact that the governing body has to approve it, which the governing body would be us?
On the TIF?
Yeah.
Yes.
We have to prove the committee's findings.
Because you're spending.
So we need to have done by next, next meeting in November.
At the latest, yes.
Yeah, your November meeting, because it's, like I said, it has to be submitted by December.
By our November meeting?
It has to be submitted into gateway by December first, where you've only got one meeting left to do it.
If we need to approve it, we have to approve it.
So we need, we need to get the redevelopment committee.
So that means, so, so Lori and I and Brian...
Oh, you guys are the redevelopment?
We are the redevelopment commission. Brian is the redevelopment commission president, so he's the one, and I'm not dogging anybody, so he's the one that needs to call the meeting for us to do whatever it is we're to do.
So you're gonna call him and inform him of that, or you want me to do that?
Go ahead, I saw you raise your hand.
I figured you'd go say that, but, he got the email, he should know it, too, but, but I'll make sure.
So then...
Jason's recommendation was, was the bond payment, and then maybe like twenty-five or fifty, whatever number in miscellaneous expense, so if something were to come up, or the bond, something with the bond, but if something were to come up and you needed to pay something for redevelopment, you've got that money there because you...
And you don't have to spend it, just because you say, show, if you put four hundred thousand and only spend three fifty, that's good, but you can't do it the other way around.
Yeah, you can't.
I know before, Tilly has advised us on redevelopment commission, and we have paid their fees from the redevelopment to do it, so. Baker Tilly, we paid their fees? Okay. Because she came in with the calendar every year course. Because this is my first year on the redevelopment commission, whatever the decade, so I have no, and we meet maybe once or twice a year, so I have no idea really what the purpose, I mean, so what I'm trying to say is I don't know what I'm doing on it.
There's not a whole lot I would intend, but once...
I understand that.
Once I pay those last two bond payments are...
So, so if when we meet, it might be who the committee will meet, if you guys come attend, too, because you've been talking to Jason about this.
That's fine.
Just to give some more input, okay?
Now, I thought he had more than the one TIF district, Jason said he looked it up, and he's like, oh, yeah.
No, it's only got, we got that.
I was thinking we had a lot of them, he must have done away with it or something.
He wanted, there was one, he wanted that.
Okay.
I didn't get any money, so. Clear as mud.
Thanks for that new news, Rick, thanks a lot.
Rick, did he say he was doing instructions in like budgeting through gateway?
Say that again, now?
Was he doing instruction on budgeting in gateway?
I think so, yes.
Because I have submitted rights in gateway, and I'd be all for any extra education I could get on it.
Well, the way, the way they talked, they would come here, and we can have as big a crowd as we want, so.
Definitely interested.
We could invite any, anybody that's interested, department heads, whoever's interested in budgeting, or however we want to set it up, we can invite as many people, two- to three-hour session, she says that we usually lose them after that, two to three hours of, and whoever wants to show up.
That's a good idea.
Oh, that's very worthwhile.
Two new members.
So we'll just have to plan on whatever you guys want, how you're gonna pay for it, and then X, Y, and Z, so.
Let's see, let, some chance to read first.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other new business? If that's the case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Steve motioned to adjourn, Pete seconded, all in favor, seven-zero, thank you very much.
Are you guys waiting for copies of stuff?
I, no, I can't, because I don't have the minutes, or anything like that, because I don't have the minutes back on the next one.
Oh, okay.
Steve, you should chip while I'm there, I hate having to work.
Kathy, where do you keep the recent one?
I got it.
Matt, you need a copy of, he does need a copy of that.